It is now seven o'clock and I will call the meeting to order. Can I please get a roll call?
Vice President Anderson?
Here.
Councillor Blakely?
Here.
Councillor Forbeck?
Here.
Councillor Jacobson?
Here.
Councillor Levy?
Here.
Councillor Prushel?
Here.
President Duncan?
Here.
All seven councillors are present.
Can everyone please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As posted, we are conducting the city council meeting by teleconference. Thank you for listening. I ask to move the city manager's report up on the agenda to inform the public about the city's response to COVID-19. City Manager Luther.
Thank you. The city of Beloit continues to be very aggressive in our response to COVID-19. These are uncertain times, but our collective efforts appear to be working. Governor Evers and the Secretary Designee of the Wisconsin Department of Health Services have extended the safer-at-home order until May 26th of 2020, or until a superseding order is issued. Important changes in Beloit include the following. First, we have postponed the opening of the Beloit Farmers Market. As the second-largest farmers market in Wisconsin, we are simply too large and heavily attended to implement social distancing measures for the safety of guests, vendors, and staff. But please visit downtown Beloit Association's website for information on food vendors. We hope to open the farmers market later this summer, if it can be done safely. Second, the golf course will be opening on Friday, but the use of golf carts will not be permitted. Rounds must be purchased and scheduled in advance. Individuals who do not reside in the same household need to maintain social distancing. Third, the library is planning to offer curbside services beginning on May 4th, 2020. Fourth, stay tuned for an announcement about Fridays in the park that is being revamped to be safe and fun. We are committed to supporting our local restaurants. And fifth, on-demand rides will continue to be available from public transit. So to schedule a ride, please call (608) 364-2870. To date, we have had no denied rides. For all of our residents, we recognize these are stressful times, but there are free resources available that can help individuals and families. Please visit resilient.wisconsin.gov for more information. Rock County has also started an emergency new small-business loan program that can amount to up to $20,000 per applicant to support small companies that are impacted by COVID-19. Additional information on this loan program is available from the Rock County Alliance. And while many things are on pause, all of our major construction projects are still moving forward, such as expansions for ABC Supply, Lions True to Nature, and North Star Radio Isotopes. And new construction projects also can also continue, such as Amazon, which will bring much-needed jobs to Beloit yet this year. The Powerhouse Riverwalk project is underway, and new homes are being built in the Oaks Two, Eagles Ridge, row houses at 511 Public Avenue, and at 200 West Grand with the Wright and Wagner lofts. Last, but not least, in regard to construction, the approval from the Federal Bureau of Indian Affairs for Ho-Chunk Nation's entertainment destination in Beloit provides hope for the future. Again, this is news we have waited decades to receive. And while we remain focused on the current state of emergency, we look forward to celebrating this amazing announcement that will bring much-needed future jobs and revenue to Beloit. Another piece of positive news is that the city of Beloit received an upgrade in our general obligation GO bond rating from Standard &amp; Poor's. We've moved up from an A+ to a AA-. This improved rating, much like an individual's FICO score, is evidence of our creditworthiness and financial stability. It also allows the city to borrow funds at lower interest rates. We should be very proud of this accomplishment. In fact, there is much to be proud of here in Beloit. Thank you for your efforts to help us slow the spread. Please continue to stay home unless you are required to work, and please continue following social distancing guidelines and limit essential trips such as grocery shopping to one individual in your household, preferably one time a week. Homemade masks, based on CDC guidelines, can help slow the spread, but continue to stay six feet or two arms' lengths away from the nearest person and wash your hands regularly. Again, the council and I are immensely proud of our community's efforts. We are also incredibly proud of the city of Beloit's staff who have been flexible and adaptable to continuous changes. Our staff, like many of you, have had to adjust along the way, both in their personal and professional lives. So thanks to all of them, to all of our residents, for joining together. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Luther.
Moving on to item three, special orders of the day and announcements. Item 3A is a proclamation declaring April 24th, 2020 as Arbor Day. The proclamation is available on the city's website. We will not be reading it in full tonight. Item 3B is proclamation declaring April 30th, 2020 as Stand Against Racism Day. That proclamation is also available on the city's website, and we will not be reading it in full tonight.
At this time, I want to add an item for special recognition of City Councillor Beth Jacobson. And we'll begin have a few words from our city manager, Lori Luther.
Thank you. So Beth Jacobson actually worked for the city of Beloit for five years prior to my arrival. And she was kind enough to reach out to me in my first days on the job. And she offered her perspective, and most importantly, to me, her friendship. So it has been a pleasure to serve under her leadership as a councillor for these past several years. And I will publicly acknowledge and just tell you in advance that we will bother you relentlessly until you sign up your application for other boards and commissions. But it has been an absolute pleasure to work with you, for you, and staff here has the utmost respect for you. And we'll miss your time in the council, but again, we are certain you will be back on a board or commission. And we wanted to extend thanks from our perspective and from the council. Council President had some comments, and we have something if you would like to come forward.
Right, right. While you're going up there, I'll go ahead and say a few words to you, Councillor Jacobson. Thank you, Councillor Jacobson, for your service to our city and to our city council. You are always prepared and critically thinking, and we are much better because of that from you. You will truly, truly be missed. I have enjoyed serving with you and wish you all the best in your future endeavors. And of course, we can't let you leave without having a few words from our other councillors. Councillors, we will start. I'll call you in order, and if you'd like to say something, you're certainly welcome to share. Vice President Anderson?
Yes, Councillor Jacobson, I really want to say I definitely appreciated your time on the council. You came on just a few months after I did, and you definitely made an immediate impact, and it was very impressive. I mean, you had you had the insight from the city as a staff member, and then you came on here ready to go. I've really appreciated that perspective and insight you brought to us. And you know, a lot of times you bring up stuff that we didn't even think about, and you made us think in different ways. And I know that everybody else is probably going to say this too, but we'll definitely miss your voice and your perspective on this council. Best of luck in the future.
Councillor Blakely?
Yes, everything that Clint said and so much more about Councillor Jacobson, it's been a pleasure to work alongside you. I have really come to admire and I appreciate it all along the way, your thoroughness and your preparedness for each of our meetings and discussions. It was great to have you there, and I'll miss you. So I hope to see you, as City Manager Luther said, coming forward on boards, if your city boards and commissions, if your time allows. Thanks for all your service, Beth, and best wishes for the next phase of your life.
Thank you.
Councillor Forbeck?
Well, I just have to say, Beth, it's been a pleasure to get to know you. And I'm just repeating what everybody else says, but you can tell how true it is that you so often ask that sort of final, pointed, focused question, where we learned a lot just from your question, much less the answer to it. So thank you for bringing your expertise and your enthusiasm and love for Beloit to the council. And I'll miss you. Best of luck, hon. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Councillor Levy?
Yeah, to Beth, thank you. I've had the opportunity to serve with you in a couple aspects. One, when you were there Assistant City Manager, and you brought professionalism to that position. You were always ready, even in meetings back then. You were not afraid to ask challenging questions of council, and I think that's what I appreciate about you, that you know the rules, you know the policies, procedures, and you help everyone else to make good, sound decisions. I like your honesty and integrity, that if we go to you, someone comes to you with a question, you're going to be honest and upfront, and I appreciate that so much because that truly has helped me while I was on the council, and even now, even when you came back, having an opportunity to dialogue with you over certain issues and stuff, and helping me to even understand some of the things that we were discussing. So you are definitely going to be missed. But as the city manager said, I think I'm going to go to the city hall tomorrow and just get a few applications and just fill them out for you and then get your signature at a later date. But we just want to make sure that you stay involved because you're definitely an asset to the city. And we greatly appreciate everything that you've done so far, so.
Thank you, Kevin.
Councillor Prushel?
Well, Beth, I will I will say, I really liked getting to know you and going back many years. I was really happy when you came back, took the job as Assistant City Manager, and did things with it, brought a fresh insight to that. But what I'm really going to miss is your understanding of Beloit's history and how we got where we are today. And your perspective there is really useful, and it's it goes very, very deep. And I'm going to really miss that, and I'm going to miss the fact that you're not afraid to express yourself, and you have really great analytical skills. I don't know why you're wasting managing money, but you know, whatever works. I predict you will be back and being, I don't know what, but I predict this isn't the last time we're going to be talking about you in the city hall. So in the future, remember how we got here and where we're going, and remember it's always getting better. And I'm just really going to miss having you around. Your voice is so unique, and it's got a perspective we can't all bring to the table. And don't pay anybody next to me making little remarks. I'm going to miss that. So good luck to you, girl. And I really, really did enjoy it. And I know I'm very informal, but you know, going to miss it. And I think you'll do all right. You be careful driving, okay?
Thank you, Councillor Prushel. And as as was stated with all of our council members, that we are even better because of you. So thank you for that. And I was going to say, do you have any final comments? But I won't say any final comments. Do you have any lasting comments? How about that?
Thank you.
Go ahead, Beth.
Yeah, this is this is a lot. I didn't anticipate all of this this evening. But thank you to my fellow councillors. The same people on the call today are the ones who appointed me in 2017. So we've made a great team since I came on board. And so I thought we you as a team are very professional, and I know you'll keep it that way for the incoming councillor Keys when she comes in. And same for staff, I mean, most of most of staff. Some of them were new right when I was leaving, but staff's always been great as well. So also, of course, the residents who then elected me. Your comments are sort of humbling, but I think my parents would tell you that perhaps my education was put to good use because I've always been intrigued by government so much that I pursued higher education in local government. And so I'm glad that, you know, all of that studying and all the countless council meetings I've been to in my young adult life have paid off and were able to serve my hometown. Being an elected official was certainly out of my comfort zone. I pursued, you know, higher education for the purpose of avoiding being an elected official and ideally a staff member, which Lori can attest to. And so it's been very eye-opening. It's, I mean, just completely out of my comfort zone. And it's been great to to be able to give back. And, you know, I already have gotten plenty of text messages and coercion, Councillor Levy, into being on a board or commission. So I'll certainly give back in whatever way I can. And I hope to see you guys again soon. Thank you so much for this. This is, I mean, you don't you certainly don't go on council or become an elected official or put your name in the hat for the recognition. So I'm just, it's been such an honor, and it's very bittersweet tonight. I feel like I've made a maybe a more sincere impact, a better impact than I was able to when I was an employee. And so it's been nice to be able to vote for things and really feel like I've accomplished more than I had felt when I left the city. So it's been a great experience, and I'll probably see you guys soon. Staff will probably continue to get emails from me. I just emailed Julie today about residential issues. So thank you again. You know, most of this just came from experience and being a government nerd, so I'm happy to help in any way I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Jacobson. Can you just turn it around, Beth? And just, Councillor Jacobson, and just show it? I don't think people had an opportunity to see. Can you go around, maybe? Can you see it from there? Can you see? Can you see it? Can you turn it around, Beth? This way, so I can just read it off. It says, Beth, it says, "City of Beloit, Wisconsin, presented to Beth Jacobson by a grateful community in appreciation for your service on the Beloit City Council, September 2017 to April 2020." So thank you. Let's give her another hand. Thank you, Beth. Thank you.
That's going to get boring from here, I guess. Item four is public hearings. 4A is consideration of Resolution 2020-037 regarding the vacation of a portion of Water Street right-of-way.
Next, our Community Development Director, Julie Christensen, will provide a brief overview.
The city has initiated a petition to vacate a portion of Water Street from the Pump House driveway to Sherland Avenue, adjacent to the Riverbend site. This is the site for the Snappers redevelopment for their new stadium. The proposed area to be vacated is 65,133 square feet in area and includes an existing local street improved with curb and gutter, lights, storm sewers, and a portion of the bike path. If approved, the area to be vacated will be incorporated into the Riverbend Stadium Authority redevelopment site. Water Street was platted and dedicated to the public in 2010, the same year that a portion of Mill Street was vacated and incorporated into the city hall and regaled Beloit parking lots. This is just one of a couple more steps that are will be before this council. Planning Commission did review this item on March 4th and voted unanimously to recommend approval of this vacation. And I just want to note that in Section 3 of the resolution, it indicates that this resolution shall be effective only upon the execution of a lease and development agreement between the city and the Riverbend Stadium Authority for construction of a sports stadium. The city clerk treasurer is directed to withhold recording of this resolution until the lease and development agreement have been executed. So the council will see the lease and development agreement yet before this vacation will take effect. And this is on your agenda for public hearing in action this evening.
Thank you, Julie. When the city council agenda was posted, an email address was included to provide an opportunity for a community input by noon today. At this time, the public hearing is open. The public hearing is now closed. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution, please? Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
So moved by?
Okay. I believe it was moved by Councillor Jacobson, seconded by Vice President Anderson. Vice President Anderson, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Uh, no questions.
Councillor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I don't.
Councillor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Don't.
Councillor Jacobson, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No.
Councillor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No.
Councillor Prushel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Just to be clear, there was no public input during the public hearing portion?
Correct.
We received none?
That is correct.
Okay, I didn't hear that part, so I wasn't sure.
Um, thank you, Councillor Prushel. Clerk Stottler, can you please say that again for clarity for the record, please?
We did not receive any input ahead of this meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Okay. At this time, there is a motion and a second to approve the resolution. I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Vice President Anderson?
Aye.
Councillor Blakely?
Aye.
Councillor Forbeck?
Aye.
Thank you. Councillor Jacobson?
Aye.
Councillor Levy?
Aye.
Councillor Prushel?
Aye.
President Duncan?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is public comment.
When the agenda was posted, we asked the public to notify us by noon today if they wished to provide any public comments.
There were no public comments received ahead of this meeting.
Thank you.
Item six is the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the General Order of Business and considered at this point on the agenda.
Would any council like anything removed from the consent agenda? Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Moved by?
I still move. Nancy Forbeck.
Moved by Councillor Jacobson. We'll have in a second by Councillor Forbeck. Vice President Anderson, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No.
Councillor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No.
Councillor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No.
Councillor Jacobson, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No.
Councillor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No.
Councillor Prushel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No.
At this time, there is a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Vice President Anderson?
Aye.
Councillor Blakely?
Aye.
Councillor Forbeck?
Aye.
Councillor Jacobson?
Aye.
Councillor Levy?
Aye.
Councillor Prushel?
Aye.
Councillor Duncan?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. There are no ordinances this evening. There are no appointments. That leads us to councillor activities and upcoming events.
We will begin with Vice President Anderson, please.
Once again, best of luck to you, Councillor Jacobson, and welcome Brittany Keys to the city council.
Thank you, Councillor Blakely.
Only to say that I encourage people to check Beloit Public Library's Facebook page. As the city manager mentioned, they're going to start curbside pickup services May 4th. And the library's Facebook page will have the details for everybody.
Thank you, Councillor Blakely. Councillor Forbeck?
Yes, I've just been sheltering in place, so I don't have anything else to say other than a sad goodbye to Councillor Jacobson. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Forbeck. Councillor Jacobson?
I already gave the longest report I've ever given, so no report.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Levy?
No report.
Councillor Prushel?
Just want to thank Beth for being here, and good luck to her.
And to let people know, I am out riding my bike, being safe. And it appears that the safer-at-home orders are working, and we've got to stick with it for a little bit longer. And then we should be, things should return to something something we can all be happier about. And it's working, it's worth it, it's worth the sacrifices we're making now. Thank you.
Next, and now we'll have my report. First, I want to reiterate again, thank you so much for your service, Councillor Jacobson. Next, I want to congratulate Brittany Keys and councillors Levy and Prushel on their election to Beloit City Council. We will be sworn in tomorrow, Tuesday, April 21st, at 6:30 in the city hall forum. Also, I want to thank our city manager, our city clerk, Lori Stottler, staff, volunteers, poll workers, and everyone involved in our electoral process. You did a great job and made history. I applaud everyone for the steps they took, that you took, to keep voters safe while protecting democracy. Also, Beloit College is having a Giving Day campaign beginning tomorrow, Wednesday, April 22nd, 12 noon, to Thursday, April 23rd, 12 to 12 noon. Their goal is to raise $400,000. We are affected by this pandemic, but the college is asking that we be all in and make a gift for students' education. 100% of your gift will go to provide tuition to a current or future Beloit College student. I challenge you to join me in giving. So go to the Beloit College website or call 363-2656 for more information. Also, I want to congratulate Terry Downing, our Deputy Community Development Director, for being named the Beloit Daily News April Volunteer of the Month. So way to go, Terry. Also, I want to mention that our farmers market is postponed to June 6th, and we have the 2020 census online. If you don't have Wi-Fi, you can go to the Beloit Public Library. So there's lots happening in our city, so please take a look at the city of Beloit website or Facebook page for updates. Next, we'll go on to item 10.
The city manager's presentation was given earlier under Report The city manager's presentation was given earlier under Reports from Boards and City Officers, 11A. The city council may adjourn into closed session here in the first-floor conference room pursuant to Section 1985 Sub 1E Wisconsin statutes to deliberate or negotiate the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, namely to discuss the potential purchase of 737 Bluff Street. The council will reconvene into open session.
Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I so moved. Nancy Forback.
Okay. First, we had a first by Counselor Jacobson and a second by Counselor Forbeck. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Jacobson. Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prushel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
The council is now in closed session.
A motion to reconvene into open session.
I so moved.
Moved by Counselor Forbeck, seconded by Counselor Blakely?
I did.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So now we would need a motion and a second to approve the resolution to purchase 737 Bluff Street?
Is there a motion to approve the resolution to purchase 737?
So moved. Prushel.
Moved by Counselor Prushel. Is there a second?
Second, Jacobson.
Second, Nancy Forback.
Second by Counselor Jacobson. Now I'll go down the list. Vice President Anderson, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No.
Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Don't.
Counselor Jacobson, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No.
Counselor Prushel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion? There is a motion and a second to approve the resolution to purchase 737 Bluff Street. I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Jacobson.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prushel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously.
At this time, I will now accept a motion to adjourn this final meeting of our current council. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor?
Nancy Forback, I so moved.
Moved by Counselor Jacobson, seconded by Counselor Forbeck. Any discussion? Hearing none? With all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and we are now adjourned. Thank you. This is the end of our city council meeting for this evening.